Thank you. It's 6 o'clock. This is the Town of Rutland Select Board Meeting. It is September 1st. Happy September, everybody. We are doing this by Zoom conference call. And Bill, would you give us a quick rundown of who is participating?
So we have Gina's iPhone. I'm not sure who that is exactly, but we have that. We have John Paul, Mary Ashcroft, Sharon Russell, Andy McCain, Byron Hathaway, Howard Burgess, Lydia Flynn, Barbara Noisely-Pulling, Ed Dumas, Jim Schultz, Carrie Clark, Chris Clark, Kevin Lozo, Kirsten Hathaway, Mike Rowe, and that's it.
That's a good whole contingent. Thanks, Bill.
Good list.
Yeah, it is. Our Chair, Josh Terenzini, will not be joining us. His wife had a baby boy, so all is well. But I think Josh looks a little tired in that photo he sent. So he's not going to be with us. And Joe Donardo is trying to get the hay in. So approval of orders. Just a reminder that you need to stop by the town office and sign the orders after tonight's meeting. Select Board minutes of August 18th, 2020 have been distributed as part of our packet. Any... Well, I'll entertain a motion to accept.
I don't have a copy, Mary.
Okay.
Mary?
You don't have a copy?
I don't.
Did you receive your packet in the mail?
Yeah, I did, but no minutes.
Okay. Let's see. So if you haven't seen them, JP, did you make the motion?
I did.
Okay, but Sharon can't second, and she can't vote because she hasn't seen them. So let's pass over the minutes. Bill, would you put that on our next agenda, please? Okay. Questions from the floor or public comments? We use this time for anyone who is not otherwise on the agenda. So do we have anyone on the line or zooming in who is... Would like to make a public comment, who is not otherwise on the agenda?
You have Andy McCain and Kevin Lozo both wishing to do that.
Kevin had his hand up first, so I'll defer to Kevin.
Aren't we doing the... It looks like Kevin Lozo, I'm guessing, is the Rutland Housing Authority, and that's under D?
That's correct, Madam Chair, but I just have some issues or... Just some issues unrelated to the municipal questionnaire from Act 250. So I can wait till then, or I can do it now.
Is it all related to the housing authority's request for the... Okay, why don't we put it all together? Anyone else?
Okay, thank you.
Andy?
Yes. I'm here on behalf of Rutland Town Fire District 5. We have a vacancy on our Prudential Committee. And our bylaws call for an appointment to be made by the Select Board for our replacement. So I'd like to be on the agenda for your next meeting and submit to you a name for replacement and have you assign that person to our board.
Well, this is John Fagan. Do you please send us a copy of the rules that you're referring to? I'm not familiar with this.
Sure, I'll be glad to. I'll send you a copy of our bylaws.
Thank you.
Is there a reason why the Fire District is not doing its own appointment?
The... Our bylaws call for us to either... To Number 5, it says, "It shall be filled at an annual or special meeting of the district, but the town selectman may fill a vacancy in such committee by appointment of a district resident till such an election is held." Our bylaws call for a... Do not allow for Zoom or electronic voting. And we don't feel that is safe under COVID-19 rules to convene a meeting at this time.
So let me just alert you that I have some concerns about a private or separate organization designating this legislative body in any kind of administrative capacity. So I just want to give you a heads up on that. If you would send me your rules, we're going to need to look into whether this is even something we should be involved in.
Okay, I'll be glad to send you that. And I'll send you a copy of the Charter, too, which I believe may mention that also in the Charter, which the Selectman gave us and which is what allows us to operate.
Sure, that would be helpful.
Okay.
I will get that off to... I'll send it in to Bill shortly. And so that'll be all I have for tonight.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? We're in the public comment section. Okay. Bill Sweet, Town Administrative Assistant to the Select Board, what have you got?
Good evening. A few things for you. So we'll start with the packet items. The updated meeting schedules and committee agenda items. One note is that Town Hall is closed next Monday for Labor Day. So that's the latest schedule. If anybody has anything they need to add or change, just let me know. Number 2 is for New Business D. It's the Act 250 application for the housing authority, so we can bring that up down. Do you want to do that now, Mary, or do you want to bring it up as one group leader?
Sorry, let's walk through the packet, Bill.
Sure. So that's number 2. Number 3, actually, I gave it to you twice. It's also in your email, are the comments from Chief Dumas on that application. Number 4 is from Fire Chief Chris Clark for his section. Quote, "He wants to get approved." Number 5 is a follow-up from the last meeting. So this is the application for the additional sewer discharge allocation from Alderman's Toyota. This encompasses all three properties on Sewer Road. So they submitted the application and a payment in full.
Okay, let's take care of this one, if we would. I'll entertain a motion to grant the sewer allocation requested by Alderman's Toyota. This will increase the gallonage to 6,670. No motion?
No move.
Sharon makes the motion? JP?
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye? Anybody opposed? Okay. Next, Bill?
Yep. Next is from you, Mary. It's an email chain. It's for New Business under F. I have that right now, so when you're ready for that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And the last thing is the additional items that I sent you are in your email. And there are a few things in there. We have comments on the Act 250 application for the housing authority from B-Trans and from Byron Hathaway are both in there as well. And another copy of Ed's are in there. You also have the PNL statement from the Listener's Office. That's for the discussion for the Days Inn. So that's Letter B under New Business. We have also another sewer allocation application from Mission City Church. They are adding a school daycare into their business, into their location on Cold River Road. So they are applying for another increase in their allocation. Their application's complete, and they also sent in there a check with a full payment.
Okay. Let's take the Mission City Sewer Allocation, if we could. Sharon, did you get a copy of that?
I did not.
It's in your email.
Okay.
Okay. When did you send it, Bill?
Earlier this afternoon.
Okay, that's why. All right.
Are you checking your email for it?
I... Yeah, I just turned on my computer.
Okay. So what's their request, Bill? How much increase?
They want to increase 384 gallons per day. And that would give them a... Let's see here. Of... They're at 201 right now, so 585 would be their total. It's well within our remainder.
Okay. With that information, I'll entertain a motion concerning the Mission City Church's request for sewer allocation increase.
No move.
Motion's made?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye? Sharon?
I said aye.
Sorry, I didn't hear you. Okay. All in favor, and the motion passes.
Okay.
Okay. So in your... I'm sorry, Bill, anything else in the... On the desk packet?
Yeah, one last thing. So the Municipal Project Manager position for the sidewalk grant.
Yes.
It needs an official appointment from the Select Board to appoint, in this case, Byron and I to do it. The minutes that we have just said that we volunteered to do it, but we weren't officially appointed. So we need an official appointment to be able to do that.
Okay. Both of you or just one of you?
Both of us. Where... So there's actually an application we had to fill out with credentials and a resume and all sorts of information. So part of it is official appointment from the governing body.
Okay. So this is for JP's sidewalk?
Yes.
The scoping study, right?
Yes.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to appoint Bill and Byron.
No move.
Motion's made. JP?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Congratulations, Bill and Byron.
Yeah, thanks. Thank you.
It's gonna be an exciting day for you.
It sure is. That was everything I have.
Okay, thanks. So while... I think Howard Burgess is on the line?
Yes, you have Howard and Marcia just joined as well.
Great, okay. Let's go down to New Business B, which is the Town Listener's Errors and Omissions Report on Days Inn. Howard, we've...
Okay. How's that? What we have here is the Days Inn, I agree with their assessment this year, but due to the COVID-19 and the losses that they were taking. And we requested some additional profits and loss statements from them. We had to get a history of what was going on. And we didn't get it in time before we had to lodge the grant list and we lodged it over to the town. So because of that, that's why we're dealing now with the Select Board having to go through the errors and omissions to get this approved. Commercial properties like that are really assessed by the income and profit and loss system. It's a very technical, very detailed system. And this year, to add to all of that, with the COVID-19, which really threw a monkey wrench into it, you know, nationwide, I should say, worldwide. And there was a lot of confusion and discussion about it. And the listeners, we went to Mike Keller, who's been very helpful to us over the years, and asked for some guidance on it. And he was extremely helpful. And I know I had sent that information to you in the past. It's very technical as to how he judged what he did. I mean, he used a lot of assumptions here, trying to determine, okay, so for the first six months of this year, their profit and losses are mixed up by a certain amount. I'm assuming that maybe as we continue along, things are going to get better. And so we put together this team, trying to figure out just where this might be. And again, we're trying to get to what the assessment really should be because of the COVID-19. And what we had come up with... The information that I have sent to you was their original assessment at the Days Inn was $3,223,400. And the Days Inn was asking it to be lowered to a value of $1,750,000. With the work that Mike Keller did with us, we arrived at a number for this year's assessment at $2,817,900. And with the idea that we would like to use that number for this current year and assuming that as we get into the end of the year and into next year, that things are going to improve, hopefully substantially, they get back on board again. So that's basically what this is all about. There's so much that goes on. There's so many items that are looked at, from all kinds of contracts and payrolls and just various things. And that's what we came up with. And Mike Keller is... He's an MAI professor. He does this work all the time. He's certainly very knowledgeable of it, way more knowledgeable than any of us are. And so that's what we did, and that's what we come up with. And what we were asking was that the Select Board would approve the success value that we've come up with.
Okay. So if I jotted down the number correctly, the Listers are requesting the Select Board correct the Days Inn assessment so that it is $2,817,900. Is that right?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Is there a motion to that effect?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? No opposed, so the motion passes. Okay. Thank you, Howard. Thank you, Marcia.
Thank you. I could have given a lot of technical information, but I spent like an hour with Mike on the phone on Monday going over cap rates and discount dollars and ROIs and NOI. So that, you know, that's a lot to take in. We were just happy that we were able to get that $2-plus million. So, thank you.
Well, I hope I didn't disappoint you by not calling on you for a technical explanation.
No, I think Howard, you know, Howard passed out, you know, did everything. And you have the information in hand. You can take a look at the profit and loss statements for three years and see how poorly they're, you know, they did. Just no comparison. Yep. Thank you.
Okay. Marcia, while I have you, thank you for the information you pulled up that made our site visit at Carmel Place yesterday a whole lot easier. So thank you for that.
Oh, you're welcome. Anytime, Mary.
Thank you. Okay. All thank you, Howard and Marcia. And we're on to New Business Item C. The Board to Discuss the Remote Access PC for the Delinquent Tax Collectors. Jim Schultz, are you on the line?
Yes, I am. Had to unmute.
Okay. So we had... You brought this up at the tail end of the last meeting, and we asked Bill to put it on the agenda for tonight's meeting. I understand the... There is a laptop that's available. It would take some upgrading of its software so that you could use it for remote access. And the cost is $125,000... $125,000. And you feel that the town should pay that? Am I... Is that a summary? Okay. So question for the Select Board. This is on our agenda. Is there any motion to this effect?
I have a question. When Dick Lloyd was our town tax collector, he was responsible for all his own equipment.
I'm sorry, Sharon, say that again?
When Dick Lloyd was the town tax collector, he was responsible for all his own equipment, be it a computer or anything else.
That is correct.
Because he was a private vendor.
That is correct, inasmuch as he developed or somebody developed for him a database program on a computer for him to do his work. I'm using NIMRIC to do this as requested by the town to help get all of the tax records, be they current tax year information or delinquent taxpayer information into one place. I do supply my own equipment for my part of the job. I have the computer necessary to connect into the town. The town needs to supply to me a connection to NIMRIC, which, using software that I believe the town originally used, which is TeamViewer, which was being used as a private piece of software. And I want to get into that subject after we finish this part. But it allows my computer to connect to a computer at the Town Hall, which is the computer that actually runs the programs that talk to the NIMRIC database to do the work. So essentially, I'm just controlling the computer that's in the Town Hall. That belongs to the Town Hall, and the town is... Needs to supply me with the connection to NIMRIC if the town wants me to put the delinquent taxpayer's information into the NIMRIC database. So that is why I feel that the town needs to pay for anything that's physically actually connected into their network at the Town Hall and any software required on that computer. That is where I'm coming from as far as how I determine what I should be paying for in the situation.
All right, thank you, Jim. Any other questions? Does any Select Board member care to make a motion? Does any Select Board member care to make a motion? Okay. The matter is not moved on, so we can't go forward. There is no motion, so we will move on to the next item under New Business.
May I continue, please?
Jim, the Select Board chose not to act on your request, and that's what was warned. So we need to get through the rest of the agenda.
Will you allow me to talk at the end of this, then, when your agenda is complete?
Under any other business, yeah.
Okay, I'll be here.
Okay, thanks, Jim.
Yep.
Item D, Board to Discuss Minor Act 250 Application for Rutland Housing Authority and Municipal Impact Questionnaire. So Kevin and Kirsten, anybody else?
Yes, Mary, I'd like to... I have a couple of questions for the Board, but that's all.
It's on this particular item, Don?
Pardon me, Mary?
It's on this particular item?
Yes.
Okay, very good. So Bill, we have received a couple of comments from Department Heads. Ed Dumas has submitted his comments concerning police protection. And Byron Hathaway has submitted, actually, I thought it was an interesting comment on the sidewalk and the shape that it's in, in this area. And I know that there was a similar question about sidewalks submitted by B-Trans. So are those... Am I correct in summarizing that's what we've received for comments?
Yes, those are the two that I got back in detail, yes.
Okay, very good. So before we get to Don, let me ask Kevin and Kirsten. Have you seen those comments?
We have not.
You have not, okay. So let's see, we need to make sure that those comments get... Let me see if I can summarize. I mean, basically sidewalks. Byron points out that the sidewalk is not in good shape there, and the applicant should be asked to make repairs necessary to the sidewalk in the vicinity of your proposed project area. Is that a correct summary, Byron?
No, my request was to have the applicant's engineer review that sidewalk for ADA complacency. Any deficiencies found then should be addressed by the applicant. If there are no...
Okay.
Found, then we'll accept the... You know, the sidewalk is what it is. There is one deficiency I would point out. In the area of Little Caesars, there's a large utility pole that is in the sidewalk itself. And it limits the amount of room for access around that pole between the pole and the curb. So there's only a small strip of concrete available for, say, a wheelchair to drive on. Actually, a wheelchair, but it has to be one wheel on the concrete, one wheel on the grass next to the curb, which puts a potential handicap person out capable near route for traffic. It's one of those things I have to watch out for when plowing the sidewalks myself. There's just very physical room. I have one tire on top of the curb and the other tire brushing the asphalt and pole.
Can I just ask a clarification question? It sounded like you were trying... You were asking us to fix the sidewalk all the way up to Little Caesars?
No. I'm asking...
Okay.
I'm asking that your engineer review that sidewalk from the town line to the mobile station and identify any ADA deficiencies, if there are any. And if there are any deficiencies, fix the deficiency.
I'm unclear as to why it's a... Why it would be the project's responsibility to fix the sidewalk up to the mobile station? That's not part of the... It's not part of our project. We did receive comment from B-Trans on the sidewalk that they're looking for, and we have made that... We will be making that change to the plan. But the cost associated with repairing the sidewalk all the way to the mobile station is, I think, an undue burden on the project.
It's also not part of the property that we're purchasing, so I don't understand why that would be part of it.
Well, and Act 250, just as a reminder, the municipal impact statement is that the criteria assesses what impact this project will have on the municipality. And the developer may be asked to contribute to impact, for example, traffic. We're not saying traffic. We're saying this could be use of a public facility, and we may request that the developer pay the cost to correct any deficiencies.
Don't you believe that your... The nature of the people that you'll be dealing with in that project will probably utilize... Will probably cause an increase in foot traffic in that area?
I don't think so, not likely, not likely.
They'll have their own personal vehicles and be driving personal vehicles everywhere?
Not likely. Some will, some won't.
So there'll be additional foot traffic unless they're using public transportation?
And that's what I would imagine would happen. I just, you know, this is a... This is a project that is running very, very close, dollar-wise. And we are under enormous pressure to get this resolved, or we will lose our funding. And so I would ask that some leniency be extended to the project so that we can get this in under the deadline. We did not anticipate having to go through a minor Act 250 application. In fact, there is a... In fact, there's a, um, there is a, um, a separate, uh, path that we are following to, um, to have the project removed from Act 250, uh, but it was felt that, uh, with the streamlined, uh, process that, um, Act 250 provided us with, this would get us to the, um, get us to the finish line much quicker, and eliminate the need, or eliminate the possibility of losing the funds.
Kevin, the fact that you, your organization finds yourself in your situation is not justification for this board not to do its due diligence and requirements for its citizens. We're not responsible for you being where you are time-wise.
I understand that, but I would, I would, um, I, I would ask that, uh, in light of the fact that these are coronavirus, uh, relief funds, uh, intended to support, uh, the area, including Rutland Town, that, um, as with every other entity that we've, uh, dealt with, uh, we've been extended some flexibility. And, um, I just, I don't feel that correcting a situation in front of, um, the mobile station is a, is a reasonable request, frankly. Um, we are going to, we are going to redevelop that property. It's going to look good, it's going to be accessible for the people that use it, and we are going to follow, uh, all the necessary, uh, recommendations. But to ask us to, um, to, to make full-scale repairs to the sidewalks in the town, um, just doesn't feel like a, a doable situation for us.
Well, I mean, we, we don't even start that conversation until we have your engineer's analysis of the, uh, handicap situation. So, I mean, you want to do everything, and I'm one fell swoop, and I'm a advocate of baby-stepping situations like this, so that the town doesn't find itself in an unexpected situation.
Well, I guess I would submit that it isn't the town's responsibility through the, through the, uh, tax assessment to make those, uh, repairs on an ongoing basis. Um, I feel sort of like we're being held hostage, um, because of a repair that perhaps should have been done by the, the previous developer or by the town itself.
Well, we're ju, we're just doing our due diligence, and you coming in here and being combative and saying that somehow your situation is our responsibility is not fair to us.
JP, nobody's being combative. We've been put in this situation by the state.
Yeah. May I ask you something?
Whatever situation you're in is your responsibility, not ours.
Okay, let, um, but we, we understand that this agreement, um, the, the town, uh, road commissioner has flagged a potential issue, so we understand that we, we as a town can submit our comments, um, to the District Environmental Commission concerning this, and then ultimately, of course, they make the decision as to whether and how to address, and who pays for, um, deficiencies if they are found. So let, we also have a comment from, uh, Police Chief Ed Dumas. Chief, would you summarize your concern or your request?
From memory, uh, basically, my concern was that, uh, how many apartments are there? Nine, Kevin?
The nine, uh, eight apartments, and then one manager's unit, onsite manager, that's correct.
Is that a 24-hour manager?
That's correct.
Well, my concern was, uh, that, uh, the, uh, increase in call volume from that location could literally tie up my, my department for hours at a time, depending what's happening, and how well they're managed. I wasn't aware of the manager on scene, though.
Yes, there is.
What kind of training is the manager going to have?
Well, the, uh, the manager's going to have to be, um, sort of take a multidisciplinary approach in terms of, um, uh, not just monitoring the, the activities and comings and goings, but also providing, uh, assistance to the, um, supportive services agencies that will be located onsite. So we have, um, the Homeless Prevention Center of Environmental Health, um, and Brock Community Action, all, uh, coming onsite to provide, uh, services to families in transition. And I guess, uh, what I, one other comment I'd like to make is that, um, you know, we're, we're working with a wide range of families, uh, some of whom, uh, have been, um, sort of forced into homelessness because of loss of employment income. I know that, um, you know, that there were some, uh, eviction moratoriums in place, but, uh, for some families, that simply was not enough. So, uh, this is a, um, this is an opportunity to get them out of the motels, uh, and into transitional housing. Which we will then work into, um, yeah, I don't frankly see this as much different than a motel, except there's going to be onsite supervision and, uh, wraparound services to support those families and, and moving on.
Kevin, can you tell me, the onsite, onsite manager, that is not going to be a college student, is it?
We're looking for someone with a, probably, um, ideally, we're looking for, for someone who has a, um, uh, has completed a degree, uh, perhaps working on their, um, masters, and, uh, needs some, uh, needs a, uh, employment, uh, opportunity that would, would complement those, uh, those studies and those efforts. So no, it would not be a, it would not be a college student.
I think ideally, it would be somebody who has some kind of background in social services.
That's correct.
Um, I think part of Ed's request was also that, um, a, a link be established between this onsite manager and the Rutland Town Police Department on an ongoing basis. He wouldn't have any problem with that, would you?
Oh, absolutely not. In fact, um, you know, we've, uh, you know, I've had opportunity to, to work with that in the past on things, and I would hope that link would extend not just to the, to the property, but also to my offices here. And, uh, we can plan to, to meet periodically, uh, just to, um, update one another on what's, uh, what's happening, and if there are any, any issues that come up, we will, um, you know, certainly, uh, act quickly to, uh, act quickly to resolve those. Um, I can't tell you that, I can't tell you that you'll never get a call from there, but I'm pretty confident it won't be any more than you get through any other part of the town. I guess what I'd ask is, Ed, um, what was your experience with, uh, Jen's Motel? I know that had a, uh, in some, in some people's minds, sort of a, a rocky past, um, but that's not where, what we're intending to build, what we're intending to set up. This is a service-enriched, managed, uh, property, so.
So the issues with Jen's Motel were, uh, the one manager you have, uh, call her Donna, was quite good. Uh, she only called us when she needed us.
Mm-hmm.
There was some sort of criminal violation going on, and I, that means if that happens, call us.
Right.
But there's also been, um, an element of, uh, people taking, there was an element of, uh, drug use and whatnot, which brought a lot of issues within themselves, and it's hard for, uh, a college kid, or even some in their late twenties, to know how to deal with that situation. And once they're in there, as you now have, they've been there for 28 days, it's pretty difficult to get rid of them, uh, victim, especially in this day and age with the COVID, and if we have to deal with them as a department, literally, if we have to arrest somebody, you can tie them up, the officer up for the, the rest of the day, especially if it's during the day, if there's a lot, something like that. And then the rest of town goes well, police services, because my officer's tied up all day on that. So that's, that's where my issue is right there. And if it's eight, it only takes one bad apple to basically ruin it for everybody. That's, it make it very difficult for us to serve the whole town, rather than spending all our efforts on just one location.
Yeah, and indeed, there are bad apples everywhere, right, Ed?
There's a few, yes.
So, um, yeah, I mean, it's, uh, it's our intent to, um, uh, to manage this, uh, manage this well, uh, control the environment pretty tightly, but, um, I'm, I'm not, you know, uh, uh, yeah, we will be, uh, screening, uh, applicants, uh, and there will be, um, some, some no-starters, so to speak, and, and that'll be based on criminal record.
I know that in the past, uh, you guys worked well with the city, and some of the places they had, they, uh, would start the eviction process quite fast if there was a problem there that just continued on.
Yep.
But I mean, at this point in time with COVID-19, I don't even sure you're going to be able to evicting if this happens. And that would be another list, list of problems on, on top of this.
Ed, we also do run background checks on the people that we rent to, um, that's part of our policies, so that's something that we do upfront, before we actually put anybody into a housing situation.
Okay.
Okay, so you have, um, heard the back and forth both on the, um, road commissioners recommend and the chief of police, uh, recommend. Is there any motion, um, that the board may want to take concerning this Act 250 application?
How about questions, Mary?
I'm sorry, Don, forgot. Go ahead.
No, I, I just had a couple of questions, and, you know, I wasn't sure this, uh, this Act 250, even though it's a minor application, this is applicable to a person even though they're not the owner of record, is that correct?
Is that directed at me, Madam Chair?
Uh, it sounds like it.
Oop, everyone's frozen.
The question is, is the Act 250 process here applicable to a person or entity that is not a owner of record of the property?
Yes.
Okay, the second question.
The, uh, let me, uh, the, the, let me give you a more thorough answer. The, the, uh, current owner of the property is a co-applicant.
The, uh, okay, uh, the, the second question is, uh, that will, this will not be a tax-exempt property once you acquire it, will it not?
Uh, we are scheduled to be, go before the Board of Civil Authority to try to enter into a, uh, payment in lieu of taxes, uh, formula. So no, it won't be tax exempt, but it would be taxed at a lower level than the commercial property would.
Why would it be taxed at a lower level?
Uh, because it's residential, uh, it's being run as a, as a 501(c)(3) organization, and the, um, uh, the mission of the, of the, uh, building is to, uh, provide services to the underserved, underprivileged.
How does that, how does that fit in terms of the town's taxable policy? I mean, is it then tax exempt, and you're asking for, to be able to pay a payment in lieu of taxes, rather than the standard taxes that the town would cha, charge this property?
It would not be tax exempt, because we would continue to pay, uh, a portion of the, the property taxes that would be calculated based on a, a, a formula that we use with, um, uh, all of our, all of our deep subsidy units, whether it's, uh, Shelly Towers, Templewood Court, Part of Hickory Street, or the building that we own on 9 Tremont Street. It's pretty standard, uh, standard practice for affordable housing developments.
I, I'm, I'm unsure, uh, Mary and, uh, board members, I'm unsure what, uh, Mr. Loso is, is telling me or us at this public meeting. Um, I don't know who defines the property values, but I, I was always under the impression that the property tax values are established by the town, and, uh, under what statute are you exempt from the regular taxation of the town, is what I'd like to know, and why I think what the taxpayers would like to know. I mean, the, the only way that the town supports the services that it provides is by doing proper taxation of the entities that are in the town. So, uh, you're putting this...
Don, I'm going to interrupt here for a minute, because this is, this is an appropriate question, and certainly the discussion I would anticipate at the Board of Civil Authority meeting. And we have warned that meeting, or, um, Carrie has warned that meeting, and you probably received notice of that as well.
Okay.
As I, so I think, I mean, you raised the point, um, but the discussion and the decision about whether and how much to grant any, um, payment in lieu of tax relief would come before that body.
Okay, thank you, Mary, and then, and I stay, uh, uh, I understand that completely. And the last question I have, uh, Mr. Loso, is, is this project limited to seniors or families, or how many children do you anticipate in this project?
The, um, the configurations are, uh, one efficiency, um, three two bedrooms, and the rest are, uh, one bedroom. So it could be, uh, an individual, a couple, or a small family.
Do you have a limitation on how many children you would allow in the project?
Well, it would have to, it would have to fall under our, um, occupancy standards. So essentially, there couldn't be more than two, uh, children in a, uh, in a shared bedroom.
So a total for the project would be then what?
I suppose it could be up to six or eight, eight maybe?
Six or eight children? Okay, I think, I think one of the considerations that the board would have, and that the town, town would have, would be the cost to the educational system of that burden on the town. And, and that's all I have, and thank you very much, Ma, uh, Board, for letting me enter my questions here.
Thank you, Don.
May I respond to Mr. Choffey?
Surely.
Yeah, maybe not the payment in lieu of taxes, but if you want to respond on the...
Right, 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 right.
Yeah.
No, just that, um, it is, it is state policy to allow children to continue to attend the school, uh, the, the school that they last attended, uh, and it would be up to that school district to accommodate that. So we would anticipate, um, students continuing to, um, get schooled, you know, wherever they were last schooled.
So if they moved in, say, say if they moved in from Fair Haven, then that would mean that they would be transported from Rutland Town all the way to Fair Haven to attend school?
That would be up to the family.
Yeah, yeah.
At whose expense would that be?
This, uh, I believe it's the standing school district, certainly not the receiving school district.
Very interesting.
Kevin, I have a question. Um, so you're not going to own this building, you're going to be renting it?
We're going to own the building. And we will be responsible for its, uh, ongoing operation, upkeep, management. Yes.
Thank you.
We'll own it. Sure.
Okay. Um, is there any action that the board wishes to take concerning, um, communication of any of the things that have been discussed tonight to the District Environmental Commission?
I think that warrants a full board discussion.
Okay, so are you requesting that we put this over to two weeks for the next agenda?
Yes.
Okay, Sharon, you okay with that?
I am.
Okay. Bill, would you warn this on our, for our next meeting, please?
Absolutely.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Uh, this project is dead in the water, if that's what happens. And we'll have to return the funding to the, to the state. I can tell you that with certainty.
Well, it's not our money.
I, okay, well, the board has heard your comment.
One last comment, Mary, before I leave the meeting.
Related to this, Don?
Yes, well, it, um, from a, from a policy standpoint, uh, this, this bothers me more than anything else, because it seems to, this, this, this application and, uh, this application seems to fit into a national, um, agenda, uh, which has been promulgated, and it's been on the airwaves, and everybody knows what it is, uh, to put affordable housing into suburban areas, multifamily suburban, uh, into suburban areas. And, and I, and I, I don't think we should be cooperating in this kind of a, of an expansive policy, policy. Uh, I just, I just don't, and, uh, that's, that's a, that's an ideological position more than a practical position, and I, and I just don't think it belongs in suburban areas, and it certainly doesn't belong in a commercial area like this, but... And I, and I just don't think it belongs in suburban areas, and it certainly doesn't belong in a commercial area like this, but that's just my personal opinion. And as far as the money goes, I don't think we ought to be in, in the initial statement that Mr. Lozo made, it was, it was, time was of the essence. Well, haste makes waste also, and I don't think we ought to be, as selectman Fagan had said, I don't think we ought to be shirking our due diligence just because of the time problem, which was not our time problem. So, and that's it, and I thank you very much, and, and I'll leave the meeting, and have a good, have a good meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Don. I will, I'm looking at the minor application, 250 notice, and notice that there, because this is being treated as a minor application, third paragraph states from the district coordinator, "No hearing will be held and a permit may be issued unless on or before September 1st," that would be today, "a person notifies the commission of an issue or issues requiring the presentation of evidence at a hearing, or the commission sets the matter for hearing on its own motion." I just wanted the board members to be aware of that, and Mr. Lozo as well.
Yeah, at this point in time, there is, the District Environmental Commission does not receive comment or requests for standing.
Right. Municipalities have automatic standing, but they don't have to at least, yeah.
Correct. So I guess what I would ask of the board is, is there a way to resolve this this evening? So that we can, you know, we can move forward. You know, I, I know, you know, it's not your money, it's not, you know, Don's problem, but the, you know, the Housing Authority made a good faith effort to come to this board early on in the process to secure a letter of support. And so we moved forward with the understanding that that support would not waver during the process. So I would just ask the, the board to consider the profound impact that it's going to have on the project, the Housing Authority, and the people that are going to be served by this project. It's, it's a solid project and it's one that frankly, we, we need your support on at this point. Because the, these are CARES Act funding, and we have a very tight timeframe to get this project built before December 20th. We've already experienced about a 15 week, 15 day delay in the construction schedule. And frankly, this would, this would represent a nail in the coffin.
Kevin, you might recall that I was the person at the last hearing when you appeared who pointed out you may have an Act 250 situation. So I, I don't think that we unilaterally were trying to stop anything. We were trying to explore all of the things that we needed to explore, right? So any other comments?
We fully just, I would say, we fully research that.
Anything that Mr. Lo- Has anything that Mr. Lozo said or any other after review of the minor application, anything else the board wishes to do on this matter tonight? Okay, so at JP's request and Sharon's concurrent, we will set this on our agenda for two weeks from tonight. All right. Also, under new business E, we have just taken care of the Alderman Chevrolet sewer discharge allocation has been dealt with. Next item is S, the board to discuss scholarship payment request. I know we haven't gotten to our department heads, I'm trying to clear up the thing, sorry, Kevin. Are you waving at me or are you doing something else?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm just struggling with my iPad.
Okay. Okay, board to discuss scholarship payment request, I believe Gina Kelly is on the line.
Yes.
We have, Bill has shared with us, I've shared with Bill, and Bill has sent to the select board members. Sorry about the dog.
The request that you have to pay, I'll say, out of time, the second half of your son's scholarship award of $250. And this would be for, he was a graduate in, in 2019, so this would be for, you know, beyond the, the year that the application that the scholarship award was made.
Yes.
Let me start by asking if the select board had received the email stream and you've read it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, very good. Now, I believe there was a request to consider, and this was not our request, but it was a request by Ms. Kelly to deal with this matter in executive session. Is that still your request?
I'm happy to have the select board address it so long as the confidentiality and privacy, obviously. Right now, you're just a student.
Sorry, I think you're breaking up quite a bit.
Yeah, I couldn't understand any of that.
Okay, yeah. I, I have spoken with Ms. Kelly before and her phone reception is not, not terribly good. So would you like to try again?
Yeah, I don't know if you can hear me better, sorry, yeah, the cell reception-
That's better.
-here in Rutland Town isn't great. Yes, that was my original request. And then you shared with me that it's an open meeting and would need to take a motion from one of the select board members to do that. So I guess I'm putting that in your all's hands.
Okay. So is there any motion by the select board to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing this matter? Okay, there is no motion for executive session, so let's proceed on the discussion of the award of the scholarship money out of time. Any questions now that the select board has reviewed the email stream? Any questions that either JP or Sharon may have of Ms. Kelly?
I don't have any, I would defer to the committee on this.
Well, the committee being the scholarship committee?
Yeah, because you guys know the rules as to how it operates.
But I think JP, our problem is this, that this was an award from 2019. Am I correct, Mary?
Yes.
Okay, and therefore the money wasn't used, so it went back into the general fund. So
So it's gone.
That's what we're afraid of because I don't, I don't know where we would pull it out of.
Can't we pull it out of the general fund, or can we pull it out of the general fund?
I don't know.
As a disbursement and expense?
That would be up to us to decide. I mean, we can't pull it from the scholarship awards for this year because they've already been made. And you'll remember that whenever, if there's any, you know, leftover money, it gets swept into the capital improvement fund.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Did this go in front of the committee or no?
No. No, Ms. Kelly was in touch with the town clerk, and there were several, well, you saw the emails back and forth.
Yeah.
And then Carrie decided to send it to the select board. Which, you know, since we're in charge of the budget, I think it's appropriate.
No, I agree, I agree. But again, it's, it's really the kind of thing, before we do it, I'd like to have the full board.
Okay.
Before we do anything, because I don't know what kind of precedent, or if we can do anything.
So are you requesting that we hold this over until, for two weeks until the next select board meeting?
I see, in order to do it properly, we have to.
Okay. Sharon, you okay with that?
Yeah, I agree, because I'm not comfortable, I, I don't know where to tell anybody to take the money out of. Why was it not used? I guess I missed that.
Yeah, so to your point, my, my son graduated, your question earlier, in 19. He applied for the scholarship with you all and was awarded $500. We submitted half of the request as the town treasurer had requested because you generally split the payments into two. And so the letter said that you would pay for the first year, meaning we submitted for the first half, which was 250. And he attended school for that first semester in December. Then, he then went, he had surgery in January, and he did not resume classes for the second semester. Hence why we did not, Carrie had mentioned, you know, why didn't he submit a bill? He didn't submit a bill because he didn't resume classes. When he was able to resume classes, COVID was underway, and being in New York was not an option, you know, that our family, you know, decided to take on. So nonetheless, he has now enrolled for his second semester of his first year here at VTC and is studying, you know, remotely because all of their students are remote. So he's, you know, in Rutland Town, enrolled there.
Okay, I, I, I think we should go before the full board. I think you have a legitimate reason. I mean, COVID on top of the fact that, that your son had a medical issue. So I think it should go before the full board because we've never dealt with this before and we can't just I know 250 doesn't sound like a lot, but we're responsible to the people of the town to make sure we're pulling from the right, you know. So if you will give us the time to meet as a full board, maybe we can get this over with quick.
In other words, we, we don't want to show any disrespect to the other board members, but the equities are certainly on your side, and we have compassionate board members that would get that.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's fine with me. I, if, you know, it's, it's, you know, two weeks is not a lot, as you saw, this dates back to before the 4th of July. So for me-
Yeah.
You know, having, having you all deliberate, you know, again, only in a couple of weeks, to me is, you know, six in one hand, half dozen in another for sure in terms of timing.
Sure. Yeah, I, I think, I, I don't think you'll have a problem, but, you know, I, I'm only one person on the board. And like John said, you know, we're a pretty compassionate board, we have children of our own. And, you know, I think you have a legitimate request, we just got to, we just have to figure out where we're pulling from. And if you, if you're willing to wait and, and give us that two weeks, then, you know, we can have an answer for you at the next meeting, I would hope.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, this, Mary, I do have one question, and that is, there, there seems to be, was there a reason why you didn't communicate with the town earlier as to your son, you know, not only not returning for his second semester, but changing schools? I mean, I, I guess email indicates that you weren't in touch with us until after the close of the fiscal year, and that's what's causing one of the, the issues here.
Yeah, you know, to be honest, it really, it didn't, to be hon, it didn't cross my mind that I needed to alert the town of Rutland that he basically had a medical issue that needed to be attended to and that based on COVID, our family would be making a different choice as to where he pursued his education. When we looked back at the materials, you know, from his award, it said within the, you know, his first, I don't, I don't have it in front of me, but something like his first year. And so for us, this is his first year. He fulfilled his commitment for his first semester, and now he's fulfilling the commitment for his second semester. And when we originally stopped to the town to submit the invoice for his first semester, you know, the indication from Ms. Hathaway was, please give us ample time to request when the payment needs to be for the next time. Because generally, they didn't make the payments until after the taxes were collected. Like, you know, for right now, you know, one of the things that Ms. Hathaway said and Carrie, you know, echoed is that you all wouldn't cut the check until after the taxes of the new year were collected. And so for me, I didn't even think to alert you all that he wasn't going a second semester. I don't know, shame on me. We alerted obviously the school, you know, of the change, but I didn't think to notify the town.
Okay, thank you. So we're putting this over for two weeks until we have the benefit of the full board to discuss. Thank you, Ms. Kelly, for calling in, we appreciate it.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, so let's go back up and hear from Carrie Clark, our town clerk and treasurer.
Hi there, sorry, I had to take myself off of mute. I really don't have too much to talk about tonight. I know that we've been hearing from many different entities, so I'm not going to take up your time. Just a quick update as far as we're getting closer to a November election, which will be pretty important. And for anyone listening, this is going to be handled much differently than the one that we just got out of. This state is running the absentee ballots. And this is important for anyone because if you are a registered voter in Vermont, you will be receiving an absentee ballot no matter what. So you will have that option. It'll come to the address that we have on file. That file was pulled from us this morning at 10:00 a.m. So any changes from now until then will be a little difficult, but we can manage through any changes. You will need to alert myself or Susan about if you have an address change. But the other thing to really understand is if you decide to come and vote in person at one of the polling places, which will be open, you will need to sign a form saying that you did not vote by the absentee ballot that was sent to you and that you can vote in person so that we're not doubling up on votes. So this is important for the public to know. We've had a lot of people call in and question this, and moving forward, it's going to be a little bit of a challenge, but we'll get there and we'll, we'll make this work.
Good, thank you, Carrie.
You're welcome.
Any questions of our town clerk and treasurer? Okay, if not, Barbara Neuwolling, Town Planning Commission Chair.
Mary?
Yes.
See Kirsten had a question, but she's on mute.
Okay.
Who, who did? Sorry.
Go ahead. Oh, we can't hear you.
Bill, are you there? Could you check and see why?
I'm here. Yeah, she wanted to talk, but she's not muted on our end.
Okay.
Hi, sorry.
You can always email me, Kirsten, if you have a question.
Okay, very good. All right, thank you, Barbara, Planning Commission. Barbara, are you there? Bill, is Barbara on with us? And you're muted, there you go.
Barbara is on. Barbara is on, I don't, I don't know why we can't hear her though either. I can hear Ed, yeah, there's Ed, we heard Byron, yeah.
What's the, is it star sixty-one to unmute yourself?
On the phone, yeah.
That's by phone, okay.
When you're on the P C, there's, there's mute and unmute, but.
How is this? I changed the microphone, okay.
Very good.
Microphone, sorry. So since your last meeting, the town got an email from a solar developer from somewhere out in the Pacific Northwest. And they're looking at two pretty sizable solar projects in the town. And as best as Howard and Bill can tell by looking at the maps, they're looking at Thomas property land off Route Seven behind Carrie's auto and over toward the Armory. They haven't submitted anything yet. The forty-five day notice is not going, the clock isn't running yet. But they did offer to come talk to the town and start the conversation, as they put it. The planning commission would love to sit down with them. So I just wanted to see if the select board wanted to do a joint meeting or if you wanted just the planning commission to meet at this point or what would work best for you. The, it's sizable and two, I'm saying that because it's going to be utility scale. And this could be up to two megawatts times two. They're looking at two different projects in that field. And a two megawatt project is similar to one that's down, like the one down by the airport off Route Seven in one oh three.
So on something like this, Barbara, the filtering mechanism of going in front of the planning commission and then separately going in front of the select board is very important. So I would not be in favor of a joint meeting. Also, you can tell them that at least one select board member has expressed the view that haven't met our twenty fifty requirements for solar. The board, this member of the board is going to be reluctant to give up any more tax base for our school for solar development.
I'm with you, John.
So that was, that was the amendment in our energy plan. So now that we hit the threshold, the criteria is a little more difficult, as I recall.
Yeah, and that's all, that's all counting on Otter Creek going through, which probably will, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay. So I, you know, I would agree with J P. I think the planning commission meeting with them first and beginning the discussion and make sure they understand what our town energy plan has. That should be the step, so.
Okay. And then the other, the only other thing I was going to bring up is that possible grant application for the Pocket Park. I've spoken to some staff people at the regional planning commission, including my boss. And, you know, we, it won't rank as one of the highest priority projects if you went through with the application, but we think it could score pretty highly. And we also wanted to bring up a couple of things. You know, there could be a connection to the Rutland Creek path, which now goes to the College of Saint Joseph. There's now senior housing going into the College of Saint Joseph, so maybe there's a physical connection there. And we also wanted to mention that the former Rutland plywood site, the brownfield assessment work has been completed there, meaning that we know what's there and what developers would have to deal with if they were going to use that site. But we think this particularly grant application could be used for physical planning at the Pocket Park site, engineering, and then weaving in the historical media or whatever is decided that works best with all the history. And last week, we had a meeting with four historians. And I think Bill sent along to you Elaine Purdy's kind of synopsis of that area. She kind of summarizes it really well. But there's, there's a ton, there's a ton of history there to connect with, to use. Ten percent match with this. If you go a little bit higher, that will give you a few more points in the scoring. And the deadline is October first.
Okay, so the maximum grant request would be how much?
You wouldn't need the maximum. You, we would, the R P C suggests a minimum of twelve thousand, fifteen thousand would be preferred. So the twelve thousand, the local match would be twelve hundred. If you went with a fifteen thousand, it could be fifteen hundred. But if you up that to something like two thousand, the scoring would be raised.
I joined in that planning commission meeting and also went to watch the boys' house launch their kayak at the Pocket Park site. And for the, the thought of using the planning grant would be to do some surveying because, of course, we would have to get easements set out and a memorandum of understanding with Green Mountain Power and the town since this property is shared by two different entities. We would also, we talked some with the historians about site markers, interpretive displays, some of which would tie into smartphones and websites of various organizations of historic interest. And anyway, we, my understanding is the planning commission will be coming in in two weeks with a firm proposal to show you what it is that the grant application will be. But the planning commission wanted to give you a heads up that they will be coming in with that request because the town, of course, would have to join in the application for this grant. Okay, Barbara, anything else? Any comments from any select board members?
No, good job.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Good, thank you, Barbara. Okay, Mike Rowe, town rec director.
Hello all, congratulations to the Terrazzini family for their addition. Next, I have a couple, a couple of things. One, the pool will be closing Monday the seventh, that'll be our last one day.
What day is that, Mike? I didn't hear you.
Monday the seventh. So next Monday.
Okay.
Okay. Then we will close it and cover it within that day or the following weekend, weather permitting, and how things go on the last day, what we clean up and close up. Rec soccer is happening. They can download the form or once school kicks in, I will, I've sent stuff up now, but they can pick up a form. Is are starting to develop and there'll be more information at the end of this week, beginning of next week. So that's a positive sign. And the same thing with youth flag football. That is also proceeding forward with lock precautions and safety guards and everything implemented. So I feel very comfortable in what we're doing. Other than that, it's a great summer season. Byron and the boys, as usual, did a fantastic job helping out with the park as well as Chuck Hall over at Dewey did a great job. So I want to thank everybody for a very successful summer. Appreciate it. That's all I got.
Thanks, Mike. Any questions of Mike from the select board? I will share that I noticed that Mike had refurbished the soccer goal and they look really good. They were all scraped and painted and ready to go. Okay, Byron Hathaway, road commissioner.
Sure, just a few things to mention. One, I haven't had anything firm in writing yet, but the rumor is that salt prices this year are going down significantly. The B Trans district price for District Three where we're located is down by nineteen dollars a ton. One district in the state, their price has gone down as much as thirty dollars a ton.
We need a bigger shed.
We don't, we don't quite know or understand why this is happening. One theory is that the farmer's almanac has predicted that the New York area is going to be the scariest area in the country. And the rest of the country is not going to get so much. So the salt companies are all trying to put their salt up in this part of the country. And they're fighting amongst themselves. There's that bit of news. There's a grant opportunity out now called the highway, municipal highway stormwater mitigation. And those applications aren't doing so well. What I have proposed is to do because that is a no cap grant opportunity. We do have to fund the entire project and then get reimbursement. It's eighty twenty money. The town line road culvert is projected to be about a three hundred fifty thousand dollar project. If we were to normally use a structures grant for that, those grants are capped at one seventy-five, leaving us with another a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. If we go this other route and get that culvert underneath that grant, instead of a hundred and sixty thousand, we've got to make up, we've only got to make up seventy thousand. So there'll be about a ninety thousand dollar savings there. What I would have to do is withdraw my application for a structures grant for that project and replace it with an application for this mitigation and then use the structures green application for the Gleason Road culvert, which could be, that's like, that's eighty twenty money, so that would be pretty well covered by that. And I'm just, I don't know if I need your permission to do that or not, but I've already, I will start on that tomorrow morning if the board is in agreement. Now, one of the other things that's involved with that, and I would like to get that information into you for the next packet, salt sheds also available underneath that. So there's no restriction as near as I can see because in looking at past awards from these grants, some towns have received two grant awards. One town that got a culvert project and a salt shed at the same time in the same year.
I said we're going to need a bigger shed.
We all know that we need a bigger shed, J P. We can only hold for about a third of a year with the salt. We have to rely on getting continued deliveries throughout the winter, which is not a problem as long as something doesn't happen to the railroad, there's no trouble showing. So if you desire, I could muster up the ambition.
Do you think a new salt shed is going to involve Act Two Fifty?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But they indicate that these grants are typically a two to four year process.
Right.
Quite a bit of paperwork process to get through the grant before you actually go through, you know, any engineering construction. So I'd like to get that information into you. And then you can decide at your next meeting. And in the meantime, I will prepare the applications. And if you're all decided you want to do that, then I can submit them. I still would be on time, you can submit the applications.
So if we got both the culvert for Gleason Road grant and the town line road culvert grant, do we have enough in this year's budget to match?
No, you'll have to plan for that budget here because neither one of those projects would happen. And the town line road project probably wouldn't happen for another year and a half, maybe even two years just because of the process and paperwork that goes with that federal one. The Gleason Road project could be done next year and we've got time to budget for that this fall. It's a question whether the legislature will put that money in. Into the new transportation bill for the quarter year budget. Everything's right up, is in the air right now.
Okay.
But let me get that information into you, you got a chance to read it over. And then I'll work on the application for the meantime and then we can go from there. And we'll still have time to get our applications in.
Okay, thank you. And while you're still there, we should touch on the fact that the select board had a site visit yesterday at Carmel Place. The homeowners association there has asked that the town consider taking over the road. The Sharon, Joe Donardo, and myself were there for the select board. We met a couple of folks from the homeowners association. Byron was there and Bill was there. Bill has summarized in the minutes that he distributed to you what occurred. And he's also done some good research since then, digging out Act Two Fifty permits and so on. We raised a couple of questions, mostly to make the homeowners association aware. This is a condominiumized development. So the houses are themselves, just the houses, are owned by individual homeowners. There is limited common area, twenty-five feet around in envelope, twenty-five feet around each home. And then the rest of the development is full common area. So the, we, this is a little different from just taking over a road because we need to decide whether we take over the paved area, our usual fifty foot right away. Do we take over the drainage system? Who would be responsible for the drainage system and so on? And some of those questions are outlined in the minutes that Bill did. We are also trying to, the question has come up again, whether a survey and as-built survey is needed. The question came up about whether, what happens with the utilities, the water and sewer lines under the road? And I think we made it pretty clear, we didn't want that responsibility. And so this is a little different and all of these things are going to have to be sorted out. Anything else to add to that, Byron?
No, I, you know, it's my opinion that if you do take, decide to take over the road, you're probably going to want to take over the drainage. We've already started with a grant opportunity to renew the permit for the stormwater pond down there because that is in the M S four area. Get our credits from that. So I think there's a lot there to look at. I don't think it's a super burden, but there's certainly some things there, you know, that maybe we should talk about at another meeting and then move forward from there.
Okay.
Mary, I did get a chance to look downstairs. We do have large scale drawings of the plans, but no as-built plans. It's just, it looks like they're the initial ones, but nothing says as-built.
Okay, I'm not at all surprised with that, yeah. Okay, so well, thanks for doing all of the digging in that too, Bill. That's good. Anything else of Byron Hathaway?
I have just one more thing, Mary. I did get late this afternoon a proposal from Otter Creek Engineering for the stormwater engineering and so forth that would be involved with the shared use path. I have not read, fully read that proposal. At the last meeting, I told you, a rough estimate from the engineer was twenty to thirty thousand. The only thing I looked at was the number, he's at eighteen. But I have not read the full proposal and would like to get that into your package for the next meeting.
Great. Thank you very much.
And that's all I have.
Any questions from the select board?
Nope.
Okay, thanks Byron. Okay, thanks, Byron.
Thank you.
Chris Parkard, Town Fire Chief.
Hi there, everybody. Just one thing tonight, and I'm pretty sure Billy put copy in your packet. We got a bid for extrication tools that the department has wanted to purchase. Do you guys have that paper in front of you?
We do.
I do.
If we prepay when we, you know, send in the purchase order, they, you save $1,700. I was just trying, hoping to get some approval tonight to purchase these.
Move to approve.
What is the price?
It's like $34,278. No, sorry, with the discount, $32,564.
Okay. Check it.
Motion's been made and seconded. I have questions, but other Select Board members, any questions?
No, I just was, we had put a freeze on so much, and then we haven't, so I'm just a little concerned there, but.
So, these tools, the tools that we currently have are no longer serviceable, and they prove themselves invaluable for helping people.
Okay.
And so, we had, we had no, the department had no choice, Sharon, there are very few vendors, and I know they shop this pretty hard.
Okay, no, no, I.
Well, that's my question. Who did you, because this is, you know, way over our usual going-out-to-bid policy. Are these guys preferred vendors, and who else did you look at?
They're not preferred vendors. It's the, they sell them by brand. It's not like there's different companies that sell the same brand. The biggest thing we liked about these is they have a lifetime guarantee, and nobody else did. Everybody else had like a two- or three-year warranty. So, we just figured that was worth a lot of money right there, just, you know, these things are going to last 25 years, hopefully.
So, there were, you did get a couple of other bid quotes?
I got a quote from the Ampkis company, which they sell Ampkis tools. It was about the same. I don't have it in front of me, but again, they don't have the warranty.
Okay. Okay, and where do you propose to take the money for the purchase of this equipment?
From the depreciation fund.
Okay, and how much is in there?
Oh, 600, over 600,000.
Yeah, that's probably enough in there, okay.
Yeah, and the other reason we want to buy them now is because when the, when the new truck is, you know, being built, whoever wins the bid, we want to make a compartment that fits these things, so they're like, got their own compartment and strapped down and all that, not just thrown in the old compartment. So, we're trying to get them the right size.
Okay. All right, motion's been made to approve the purchase, $32,564 from TNT Rescue. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Well, I guess there wouldn't be if we all three voted for it. Okay, motion passes.
All right.
Anything else?
That'll do it. That's all I got, but thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Before I forget, we had, well, Carrie is still there and Bill, we had asked about the COVID reimbursement expense grant, and I think at least one of the things that stood today, and I think it was the FEMA application, where are we on that?
So, short story isn't submitted. The little bit longer one is we didn't qualify for the FEMA grant because we didn't actually spend enough to meet their threshold. So, because we didn't, we were eligible for the state grant, which we have applied for, and we're just, the awards are a few weeks out still, but we, we have applied for the reimbursement with what we had, but it's going to be through the state, not through FEMA.
Okay. We figured that we had to be denied by FEMA, which we were in order to, denied or not qualify for.
Yeah.
So, just curiosity, how much are we trying to recoup here?
It was, I think, 2,200.
Okay.
I don't have it in front of me yet.
No, it has to be exact, but that's good.
I think it was like 3,500 to get to FEMA level, but we didn't, we didn't meet it. So, we're, we went to state one, so we'll hopefully get through there.
Okay, well, thank you, Carrie and Bill, for putting that together. Appreciate it. Okay, Town Police Chief, Ed Dumas.
I don't have a whole lot tonight either. I have Colister's clearly, the total was 58. I do have a personnel matter that I have to take up in the executive session at the end of the meeting, and that's about it. I wish you guys had some questions for me. We did have two days of training, so we weren't at the, Ed wasn't on the road, I was at C-Tech. So, part of the things, one of the things we have to do, so. The state police covered for us, as usual, so thanks for them.
Okay. Any questions of our police chief, and then we'll, we'll do the executive session at the end of the meeting.
I have one more thing.
Yeah.
I just want to bring it up, the deferred comp thing that JP was looking into, is it a go on that? So, we can start doing that again. It was something that we had carried over from the city, the deferred comp program.
Yeah, no, they understand that the plan doesn't return as much as a private plan would, but the hassle-free aspect of it being taken from their paycheck, that kind of thing, is beneficial to them, so I think they, it should go forward.
So, does the board need to make a motion to authorize the deferred compensation plan?
Sure, I would make that motion.
Seconded, and seconded by Sharon. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor of the deferred compensation plan, please say aye.
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 Aye. No opposed, the plan is accepted, and the motion passes. Okay.
That's all I have until the executive session at the end of this meeting.
Yeah, can you hang around for a few minutes?
I can.
Okay, thanks. JP, Town Health Officer.
Nothing current to report on.
Okay. Committee meeting update? We reported on the Select Board meeting that we held last night. Any other meetings that occurred? No, okay. I don't have the project list. We'll keep moving. I do want to issue a thank you to Marty and Mary Wasserman for the planting they did outside the town hall. We've got some nice flowers out there, and it looks great. Thank you very much. And if you've been over there, you've also noticed the new crosswalk. The, the edges of the road have been prepared for wheelchair access, and before too long, we'll have a crosswalk there, so all good things. All right, down under new business, A, board to discuss the status of COVID-19 response plan. JP, anything else there?
Just carrying on.
Okay, we'll hear what the governor has to say as we approach September 15. Also, under new business, item, see the board to discuss the circle. And it's true, we haven't seen the circle out lately, but we also are aware that people who usually collate, hold, put the mailing labels on, and help with the mailing are the RSP, R, retired, whatever, they're great people, anyway.
RSP.
Thank you, thank you. And of course, it, you know, they're in that high-risk category, and it's difficult to pull them together, so. Any thoughts about the circle?
I think Josh has some information, probably germane to the discussion, so if we could table it for two weeks, that would be helpful.
Okay. Bill, would you put that on the agenda for two weekends, please?
Got it, yep.
H, we've discussed the visit to Carmel Place. Any other new business? We have Jim Schultz under that, and then we'll do executive session with the police chief. Jim, are you there?
Yes, I am, thank you for the time. I have an initial question of Bill Sweet. In the email, there was an estimate of about $125 to get the work done. Is, is that, how, how firm is that? Could it go, could it go 250, 500 dollars?
Well, Vermont Digital charges a, a initial rate and a trip charge to get, to come out here, so that's, it's unlikely it would take them more than an hour to reconfigure the computer for the access. I really don't, I don't really see that being, being the issue. I mean, they do charge us hourly, but it's, they've done a whole lot more work than this in less than an hour, so I don't really foresee that being an issue.
So, you don't see it, definitely don't see it going over 250?
I, I can't say for certain, but it's unlikely.
Thank you. So, what I would like to propose, which is partially what Joe started to say last time, and I guess it wasn't, just voted, just wasn't voted on, was I'm willing to go into a discussion after, say, in the next board meeting or in an executive session if needed, to discuss this whole thing as to who's responsible for what. But in order for me to do the job for the town as it's being done right now, which, as you all know, Dick Lord did it for 37 years without any connection to the town whatsoever, and I would have no issue doing it that way if I have to. As a matter of fact, I've turned, done the last couple of turnovers without the pleasure of using NIMRIC. So, I'm willing to, to put that forward and request that the work be approved, and who's, who's going to be responsible paying for it be determined at the next meeting, and I will pay it if I'm the one that's determined to pay for it. I'd like to keep it to a limit of 250 dollars somehow, and hope that the 125 really is firm, and I believe, Bill, it would be. And we can go forward from there. I can do a much better job for the town's taxpayers if I have, or a much more efficient, actually, job if I have access to NIMRIC. So, I'd also like to have this somewhat expedited, if you agree to do it. If Bill can get them in here, into the town as soon as possible to get that computer up and running, I will send him a list of a couple of pieces of software that need to be on there, which I think would be on there anyways, but I just wanted to make sure.
Okay, is there any motion from the Select Board? Is there any motion from the Select Board? Okay, just a reminder that we had put this off for, there was no previous motion when we raised it before, there is no motion now, and we are also down two Select Board members, so we don't have an answer for you, Jim.
So.
All right.
Okay.
We don't have an answer for you, twice, we don't, yeah.
Understood, and I want to, I want to be clear. That means that the work will not proceed? Is that correct? The work will not proceed at this point?
We have not been able to approve a motion that would authorize the payment of that money.
Okay, so that means the work's not going to go forward. That's, that's what I wanted for an answer. It is the answer, I guess. I guess I'll have to see you folks in two weeks and see what's happening.
Okay.
Do my best to keep the town up to date on what's going on with the delinquent taxes. Without NIMRIC, that's going to be a little difficult, and the longer I go without NIMRIC, the, the bigger the issues will be for me, because I'll need to start building my own computer system and database to run this, if I can't rely on the town to give me access to NIMRIC. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Jim. All right, is there any other old business, any other new business tonight that we haven't already considered? Any old business? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session and request that the police chief join us. Is this a personnel matter?
Yes, it is.
Chief Dumas, is this a personnel?
It is.
What's your pleasure, members of the Select Board?
Move for an executive session.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to go into executive session for a personnel matter. All in favor of the motion? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.